...the above referenced words and the area surrounding it. That is not to deny history, that is not to rewrite history, that is not to be revisionist. Whether we like it or not, it happened, and that is part of our city's history. The area has already been claimed as Parker Center. Mr. Moore, the chief engineer, indicated that there will be an issuance of an RFP, and I would suggest that as part of that RFP, that we just not put a parking lot in, but we try to do what we're doing throughout the city, which is to create a multi-use space pursuant to Proposition 0, so that we get the biggest opportunity that we have. But again, I argue that the name is there, leave the name there. I have to say to Mr. Parks, I respect your principles and your dedication to hold on to your principles. That's in short supply these days. People often react to things based on how the media responds and pressure from other places for political reasons. You are taking a highly difficult position, and you have documented it well, made a very compelling case, and I respect you for it. But I think it's important to be able to debate and discuss, and as I spoke to Attorney Branton this morning, I told him that I had hoped that when Barack Obama was elected, it would have provided us with a larger opportunity to be able to debate, discuss, respect each other's intellect, and deal with facts, whether we like them or not, cold, hard facts, and analyze them. I don't know about some of the other folks, but I went to school and got an education to be able to learn how to reason, not to obey, but to reason. And so, in closing, what I'm proposing is to leave the name where it is. Let us, as a council, create a protocol and a process that will be respected for time immemorial, to name a building and de-name a building if that is to be the case, but a process to be able to do that. And I'm going to ask, and I'm asking now, that all of the motions be sent back to committee, and that we not come back until we have a process in place, to name, or to de-name, or defrock, or whatever you want to call it. Okay, alright, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that'll be sent to the committee. Thank you.
And thus, your Los Angeles City Council voted to send the matter of naming the new police administration building back to committee for further review. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live, or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org. Follow the instructions for video on demand. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday, at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sundays, at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 24th, 2009. On behalf of Jim McBride and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for the first of May. Happy May Day to everybody, and welcome to the Van Nuys City Council chambers. We're here on the first Friday of each month, and in our efforts to bring city council closer to all Angelinos, welcome our viewers on Channel 35, those members of the public who have joined us today, welcome, as well as those who are in San Pedro and downtown at City Hall, where we have remote capabilities for testifying, as well as for watching and listening to council meetings. We are always broadcast live on Channel 35 through the city's cable system. We're also available online, live streaming webcasts, as well as archived footage of our past council meetings at our city's homepage. That's at lacity.org. There's a wealth of information about city services and departments, elected officials, and other ways to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. And you can finally use your telephone, if you're not close to a computer or television, and call in to listen to council meetings, or any of our committee meetings. That number is 213-621-CITY. It's called Council Phone, and again, that number is 213-621-CITY. Our agendas are available here on the side, if anybody would like to look at those. Those are made available also online, as well as in person, 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance, for our special meeting items. If you'd like to be heard on any items that have been agendized today, all items receive a public hearing, either in committee or here in council. If they've not yet received a public hearing, your card will trigger an automatic public hearing. Items that have already had a public hearing, you can fill out a card, and if a council member reopens public hearing, we can hear further public comment. A part of the meeting is also for general public comment, for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city council, and that's two minutes per speaker at the podium, and we try to get to as many of those as possible. Again, just a reminder, it's for items that we have some power over, but are not on the agenda today. With that, we have nine council members that are here. Thank you to those that are here on time pursuant to the council rules. We have Councilmember Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, and Wesson. We have Ms. Perry excused today for city business, and we have Mr. Zine excused as well, but Mr. Smith and Mr. Wesson are definitely here on time. That's Smith and Wesson here on time. Very powerful combo, Smith and Wesson. We have just waiting then for Mr. Alarcon to show up, Mr. Labange to show up, Mr. Reyes to show up, and Mr. Weiss, I've heard, is in the building, so I think he should be here at any moment, as soon as we have ten members. That will constitute two-thirds of our 15-member body, and a quorum. Mr. Weiss is here, so if we can click him. Mr. Reyes is here, excuse me. If we can please call the roll. I'll call the roll if we don't have access to the... Alarcon, Cardenas, Weiss, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, eleven members present, and a quorum. Madam Clerk, our first order of business will be approval of the minutes. Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, it'll be approved. And then we have some commensurate resolutions for approval as well, that Mr. Parks moves and Ms. Hahn seconds, without objections, those will be approved as well. I think I'll run through the agenda next. We do have one presentation, but that will be Mr. Alarcon, and he's coming in just a little bit, we have heard, so with that, we'll take up the first five items, items one through five. They include three ordinances, which we'll hold on the table. Ordinances require 12 members to go through on their first reading, or else they're carried over for one week to a second reading, so we'll hold those on the table. We do expect 12 members, so as soon as one more member, Mr. Labange or Mr. Alarcon shows up, we will take up those items. That leaves us items four and five, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call four or five special? Four or five? Ms. Hahn.
I'd like to continue items one through four till the May 5th.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll continue those for four days, until May 5th. So ordered, till 5/5. Alright, that just leaves us item number five. Anybody wishing to... We have two reports on file, Madam Clerk, is that right?
Yes, yes, there are two reports on the file.
Okay, and if they do not conflict with one another?
I do not believe so.
Okay, we'll move both of those then. If nobody wishes to call them special, let's go ahead and open the roll on item number five. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items six through 11, and 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Do we have cards on any of those items?
I... Six, seven, and 10?
Eight, 10, and 11.
Okay, so cards on all of them but nine? Anybody wishing to call nine special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on nine. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Okay. Number nine is approved. Next items on the continuation agenda.
Next items on the continuation are 12 and 13, and those are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 12 or 13 special? Mr. Parks?
We just hold 12 because of a minde motion, direct defending.
Sure. Okay, item 13, anybody wishing to call that special? Ms. Gruel, are we good?
Are we calling 13 special?
Nobody has, but if you'd like to.
Yeah, is there somebody from the department here?
I'm not sure, but we can inquire.
Okay.
See if the department is here on number 13. And if we can hold 14 on the table for closed session, please. That will take us to our general public comment. Now, again, general public comment is for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city council. These are public comment here. Our first speaker is Arnold Sachs downtown. Good morning, Mr. Sachs.
Good morning, thank you. Pretty quiet. By any chance, I hope some people looked at both yesterday's L.A. Times and today's L.A. Times. Yesterday's L.A. Times had a story regarding DNA, and how the police captured, happened to tie in a suspect to some rapes from 1970s and 80s using DNA testing, and using the state and the federal DNA database bank that has been established since 2001. That shows the importance of the testing that's required because of the federal changes in the law. The police department, and the council, and the mayor need to get on the ball and get moving to eliminate this backlog that they claim is all rape cases initiated. Then in today's newspaper, you happen to notice a picture of Mexico City, how deserted it is due to this influenza crisis. There's another crisis that should also be addressed, and that's the car bombing malaise that's affecting the country. If you saw in yesterday's newspaper, another 40, over 40 people were killed in a car bombing in Baghdad. That's another disease that needs to be looked into. And finally, in the New York Times yesterday, or I believe on Tuesday, there was an article regarding universities, and how they're trying to save water in the school system in New York by eliminating tray service in the schools and the universities, and the results are quite astonishing. I've mentioned that a couple of times in front of the city council, I've mentioned it a couple of times in front of the Southern California area governance departments. Why, in the midst of this huge drought that we're supposed to be affected by, why is our water companies not taking the lead in looking at new, specific ways to save water? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is here in chambers, Matt Stellan? Come on forward. Sorry if I butchered that. Anyway, after that will be Andres Tena.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, thank you.
Good yourself.
Good. I'm here today to speak about an incident that occurred on April 23rd, and the evening, in the early morning of April 24th. This is a hit-and-run bicycle accident in downtown Los Angeles. We had a site, we were riding in a group of about 15 cyclists, and our friend Andres Tena, who will speak next, was struck by a black Hummer H3. And after the accident, cyclists attempted to speak with the driver, and asked him to stop and give his insurance information, and in order to prevent us from getting his insurance information or calling the police, he drove his car through multiple cyclists who had to move out of the way in order to not be struck by the car, and then he ran over three bicycles, dragging them four blocks, or I'm sorry, block and a half down Seventh Street, over to Broadway, where the police then stopped him, handcuffed him, and spent... Sorry, you guys move or... And then, after a very short investigation, and refusing to take some witness statements, the police declared it an accident, and released the driver. We're here to demand that the police start protecting cyclists as opposed to ticketing them only, and that they don't allow hit-and-run drivers to go and continue driving on our streets. It's not only a threat to cyclists, it's a threat to pedestrians, it's a threat to anyone who's even outside in downtown at night to have that same driver on the road. And we would ask that you guys open an investigation and find out why Officer Cho, who was the highest ranking officer that night, why they let that driver go, and if they have a good reason, well then, fine, but I really don't think that they do. And we would just ask you guys to take some time to look at that, and think about protecting the people who ride the streets of our city.
Thank you, appreciate it. Andres Tena is our next speaker. After that is Krista Nicole Carlson. Yep, yeah, hold on one second, if you don't mind, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
For those folks that are just here, it was an interesting comment to the city attorney, and I believe the city council doesn't have jurisdiction to open a police case and review it at some of the inspector general's responsibility, the police department, is that correct?
Well, it is up to the police department's discretion whether to file a case or not, or whether to send that forward.
They're asking for investigation, why the officer did what he did, and I don't think the council has that legal authority, but the inspector general does. Is that correct?
That is true.
Could we make a request to the inspector general?
That is true.
Is that within our purview?
We can do that, and I was going to suggest to the folks that they go to the police commission office, to the commission office and the inspector general?
Yeah, we actually have opened a complaint with the inspector general.
Well, and we could certainly, as a city council, request the inspector general to look into this case, and that would be something I would like to do.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Andres, go ahead, and then Krista will follow.
Hi, my name is Andres Tena, and thank you so much for your time. I was actually the person, I was the one that got hit by the H3 Hummer. It was Thursday night, Friday morning. It was really strange though, because myself thinking that I could bicycle ride anywhere in Los Angeles and be completely safe, but next thing I know, I'm getting struck by a Hummer. I'm on the floor, not knowing exactly what's happening, and I'm just hurting, I'm hurting, I'm scared, I'm like, frightened, like, am I hurt? Did I break anything? Next thing you know, paramedics come, I go to the hospital, and this is just on to my awareness that the next day, I just hear exactly what happened. Like they said, the Hummer was, he ran over three bikes, he tried to get away, and not only that, even the biggest shock that I had was that they arrested him and let him go. And it's amazing, how can someone be let go after you hit someone and even try to hurt more people? And it's not even that, I'm getting worked on chiropractor work, and now I'm getting even more tests done, because I have a very large bruise on my left hip that's not going down. The swelling is actually getting bigger, and the bruise is spreading out. I'm actually getting a CAT scan today, and I'm really afraid that it might be something else, it might be something bigger. But I'm really just here to ask you, if you could please let us bicyclists ride safe, and that's all we need, just to ride safe, and just be one with the community. We are citizens, we want the respect that everybody else has, and that's all I ask for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. Appreciate those words very much. Krista Nicole Carlson is next, and Alex Thompson will follow. Good morning.
Good morning. I live in North Hollywood, and I work in Beverly Hills, and I commute by bike every day, and I was involved in the incident with the Hummer last week, and it was very disappointing to see, there's a lot of aggression that comes from motorists towards cyclists. A lot of motorists don't understand that we do have legal right to be on the road and to have use of the lane, and when we have, just, when we come up against that aggression with motorists, there's a lot of entitlement mentality that occurs with the motorists. And in this incident, that motorist struck one of my friends. That motorist also gunned it through our bikes, made a hard right turn from the left lane, and in the process, we scattered, three of the bikes were totaled. It's just astonishing to me that nobody else was hurt by that incident. I wasn't very close to the car, but I was holding my bicycle, and the car took the bike in front of me, and my bicycle, out from my hands, and pushed it against my legs and pulled it under it, so I was very close to, very clear danger. And I can't prevent someone from being aggressive on the road, but I would definitely like the support of the city and our law enforcement to be able to have that protection. I know that, as a citizen of this city, I have a right to protection, and I have a right to full enforcement of the law, and I know that the events that happened that night, it was clearly not an accident. It was clearly malicious and violent intent with which that driver did what he did. So it was very disappointing that after we had gone through all that, after we had essentially been attacked, that the officers, and the officer that led the investigation, conducted it with a very clear bias.
If I can ask you to wrap up, we try to keep it as fair as possible, two minutes to the clock there.
Sure, thank you very much, and it was just very disappointing to see that. I'd like to see us have the full protection of the law that we're allowed.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Alex Thompson is next, after that is Stephen Box.
My name is Alex Thompson. Today's May Day, today's the day that a bunch of protesters got beat up by LAPD, and today we are reminded that despite many good officers in LAPD, there are things that LAPD is not good at. LAPD is not good at crowd control. LAPD is not good at civil rights, and LAPD, we're learning, is not good with cyclists. What are you doing about this? We haven't seen the Bicycle Master Plan anywhere, the thing has gone AWOL. We haven't seen the Cyclist Bill of Rights recently, there are no sheros, there are no bike lanes. All these things are just languishing in committees somewhere, not getting done. And while that's happening, while council is failing to push forward the projects that matter to cyclists, you're pushing forward proposals that are your pet projects. For example, there's a request for proposals for bike sharing, for a bike sharing program like Believe in Paris. Bike sharing? Who wants to share being the victims of a hit-and-run, and then being told you're at fault by LAPD?
Not me.
Not any of us.
I'm sick of a council that's unresponsive to our needs, and I think that you need to listen to what cyclists have said is important to them, and advance those issues. Biased policing is priority number one for cyclists, and that's why we're here. Do something about it, and do something now. Thank you.
Stephen Box is our next speaker. After that is Road Block.
Stephen Box, I live in Hollywood, and I'm a cyclist. You know, when we ride, we get screamed at, we get honked at, we get spit on, we get things thrown at us, and still we ride. We get squeezed, we get pushed, we get run off the road, and still we ride our bikes. We're transportation solutions, we're not transportation problems. We get hassled, we get cited, and we get handcuffed, and still, we rode out here today. You give us resolutions, there was one December 20th, 2006, that addressed when motorists hit cyclists. It disappeared, we never saw it again. You voted for it unanimously, it just disappeared. You paid $400,000 for a bike map that would have recommended bike routes, disappeared, haven't seen it. Where's the money? You funded the Bicycle Master Plan, the 2008 Bicycle Master Plan. I'm late for everything, but it's already 2009, and we still don't see the $450,000 Bicycle Master Plan. We're the experts on the streets from the perspective of a cyclist. We'd like to be asked about these endeavors, and we'd like to see that money do something to actually benefit cycling in the city of Los Angeles. But you're using soft words like encourage, recommend. We brought you the Cyclist Bill of Rights. You voted unanimously to ask for a report. Nothing has come back from those who are in charge of the reports. So we stand before you, and we want to partner with you, but this is the biggest city, and the most populated state, and the most powerful country in the world. So we would like to see safety on the streets become a priority, and we're here to partner with you, but we're here to make it happen, and we're looking for strong words like commitment, and we're looking for strong actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Our next speaker is Road Block. After that is John Cassidy. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm a lifetime resident of Los Angeles, born and raised. I'm here today to raise awareness about the increasingly... I'm here today to raise awareness about the increasingly dangerous practices of some members of the LAPD in dealing with large-scale group bicycle rides. This is not to say that all, or even a majority, of police officers act belligerent. In fact, many times over the years, the LAPD has been very kind and tolerant of the rides, and they are to be thanked for that. Sadly, there appears to be a growing pattern of disregard, harassment, and even violent behavior perpetrated against the community rides, and this needs to be addressed. I've personally witnessed officers driving belligerently into the masses, forcing bikers to swerve into others, and even going so far as to tackle riders off their bikes. I've seen whole groups of riders cited erroneously in what amounts to collective punishment. I'm here today to ask that the council understand and appreciate that social rides cause the streets to come alive with the community, and that it is a good thing. In a typical night, you will find people of all backgrounds and classes, from lawyers to baristas, riding all over the city. People are getting outside, they're getting exercise, and they're getting together. What I'm asking of the council is to urge the LAPD to use utmost care if and when they decide to ticket or disperse the crowd. If LAPD is going to ticket individually, then please find a way to do so safely and accurately. If LAPD decides to disperse the rides, then please do so safely and reasonably. We are all part of the community we ride in, and we're all part of the greater Los Angeles area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. John Cassidy is our next speaker. After that will be Lindsay Nelson. Good morning.
Hello, my name is John Cassidy, I'm from Hollywood, and I'm a cyclist. I was also involved in one of the incidents that the previous speaker mentioned, and I would also like to ask that we get safe enforcement from the police department. You know, we witnessed aggressive driving into the crowd of cyclists on the evening of March 27th, and frankly, it's quite scary when you're on a bike and a police cruiser veers into a group of cyclists in order to randomly select 10 of us and give us tickets for running a red light that we were nowhere near that red light. We were, at the time when they pulled us over, we were half a mile away. Some of us were apparently going five miles an hour, and some of us were apparently going 20 miles an hour. And it's just erroneous, and we need safe enforcement. If they choose to enforce, we would like it to be accurate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lindsay Nelson is our next speaker. And after Lindsay will be Mark Peterson. Good morning.
Good morning. I live and go to school and ride my bike all throughout LA, and I would just like to point out that the disparity between the way motorists and cyclists are treated here in LA, not only in the lack of protection from law enforcement, but in the lack of cycling infrastructure, is a blatant violation of our due process and equal protection rights under the United States Constitution. City council should support us, because we are the solution to your problems, we help the environment, we reduce traffic. We have rights too, we are taxpayers too, and we are part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Peterson, and then after that is Thomas Presley. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm a commuter cyclist, my bicycle's my transportation. And I'm just here to support all of the comments that have come so far, and to say all of the accommodations which are possible would be great to see, but I think the minimum we should expect is a reasonable and knowledgeable treatment by the LAPD. As an example, when I was riding into downtown at one point, an unmarked car got on its loudspeakers and told me to move over to the right. Now, I was riding just outside of the door zone, which is the area that, you know, cars can open their doors into, and you can hit it and be seriously injured. So there's a fundamental disconnect where I think law enforcement does not understand why cyclists ride the way they do in order to keep themselves safe. I think this is one thing that can certainly help to have an understanding, so that we can all, as citizens, use our transportation at work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thomas Presley. After Mr. Presley will be Ted Rogers. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Thomas Presley, I'm also a commuter cyclist, I live in West Hollywood. And the issue that I wanted to raise was actually had specifically to do with the city council with regards to the fact that a number of your constituents, as shown by percentages in terms of bike sales, is going up. So it doesn't make any sense that the city council isn't responding to their direct constituents' desire to have a cohesive, comprehensive bike-protection program. I mean, it makes sense, bikes weigh 25 pounds and cars weigh six tons, there's not any way that we could ever win against that, which is why we need the power of a higher power to protect us from that. I understand that it's not under the city council's jurisdiction to prosecute, question, or bring police officers directly to court to answer for their actions, but I do believe that it is the city council's responsibility to implement social programs that will help increase awareness of things like biking. Why has the city council, or if they have, can they present evidence for educational programs within the police department that is helping them become more aware of cyclists? I think a lot of the problems coming between motorists is because they're not being slapped on the wrist, because cops don't know that they need to be citing people for this. So why is there not educational programs being funded by the city council to address this ignorance problem? And if that happens, it's a systemic thing. If the cops know to stop people for doing bad things, people will stop doing bad things. I request educational programs need to be the top priority of the city council to make awareness a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments this morning. Ted Rogers is our next speaker. To Mr. Rogers is Anton Sens. I'm sorry if I butchered that. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ted Rogers, I write the blog, bikinginla.com. I wanted to come here today to comment, what happened here this last weekend is nothing new. Same sort of thing happened to me almost 10 years ago, when I was struck by a driver in a road rage incident. I called 911, the police came, and the officer actually said, I was stopped at a stop sign when I was hit, and the officer actually said to me, "I don't believe you were stopped at a stop sign, because every bike rider runs stop signs." I don't. I stop for stoplights, I stop for stop signs, I'm courteous, I'm respectful of other drivers, other users of the road. And yet, this driver was led away with no charges, no tickets, and basically, the police told her, "You did the right thing, do it again." The same thing happened in the Mandeville Canyon incident, when this doctor had done it before, and the police let him go. So he did it again, and he was very surprised when the police were upset with him the second time, when people were injured. Now it's happened again, this Hummer driver has been given permission to do this again. We have got to stop it now. There is violence taking place on the streets of this city, they are using cars instead of guns. We've got to stop it, and the way to stop it is education. Massachusetts requires now that all police officers entering the academy must complete a course in bicycle safety and bicycle law. Why can't we do that here in Los Angeles? Officer Cho, the police officer who was in charge of this incident, there are people I know who would like to see him fired, I don't want to see him fired. I want to see him required to ride with the midnight riders on one ride, just one. So he can see what actually happens out there and the dangers that cyclists face every day. And as a final comment, Mr. Weiss, I am so glad to see you here today, because I know you're running for city attorney, you have a roomful, not bicyclists, a roomful of voters.
Thank you so much. Thank you, appreciate that. Anton, and this is a reminder, folks can address the council as a whole, please. Anton, and I'm sorry if I butchered, how do you pronounce your last name?
Sens.
Sens. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman, and woman. My name is Anton, I'm a former member of the Los Angeles City Council Youth Council, recently graduated from high school, and I got my car one year ago, six months after, because of the gas prices, I got my bicycle. Now, I don't want to imagine all the people like me, who've chosen to ride a bicycle instead of to use the transportation, 18-years-old and younger, have to face with motorists. I mean, we are the youth, and we're going to be voting soon after, and we don't want to be threatened by the cars. And we just want to see the same protection that are given to motorists that should be given to cyclists. Because as a former cyclist said, we are facing a six-ton car. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Somebody lives at 3454 Marathon Street? 3454 Marathon Street? Just identify yourself for the record, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Pennington, I live in Silver Lake, which I think is your jurisdiction. I've been biking for almost 10 years, I've been biking in New York and in Boston, and now in LA. LA is definitely my favorite city to bike in. But I think what all of our stories have in common is that LA is wasted potential. LA should be the number-one biking city in the country, for weather, for topography. It's beautiful here, it's fun to ride here, and it's such a waste. I mean, all you ever hear about will be Regoso, whoever, is like this train that they want to take to the beach, awesome, but you know what? Can't paint a lot cheaper. And I wouldn't mind seeing some bike lanes other than the short wind on Sunset or whatever. These are really, really easy solutions, it doesn't have to be this overreaching, grandiose thing that has to be done. There's really things that can be done, like shovel-ready jobs or whatever you want to call it, that can be done immediately. So I would really love to see LA take the lead in helping to green our city and green our country, work with the governor, get something going on, get some funds down here, and make LA really shine an example of what bicycle culture should be in the country. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming down. Ivan Tharian? And after that is Veronica Haraghi.
Hi, good morning, LA City Council, my name's Ivan Tharian, and I live in Hollywood. I've been cycling in Los Angeles for five years, both commuting to work and on the weekends, riding a PCH. Though, as mentioned before, there's definitely a sense of entitlement, both by drivers and some that work for LAPD, that we don't have a right to be on the roads, and we know that not to be the case at all. Many times, I've been pushed to the shoulder of the road very tightly by motorists that feel I should not even be on the road, and you have to take what's the best road of action for you, either jump off the road, get on the sidewalk, or even have to run a red light or a stop sign. And in one particular incident, there was a driver that was honking me off the road, and I had to get away from that driver, I had to run that red light, unfortunately, to get away from that person, and sure enough, a motorcycle cop stopped me. I tried to explain to the motorcycle cop why I was trying to get away from the driver who was trying to run me off the road, essentially. He didn't want to hear it, he had nothing, he couldn't care less. I mean, he was not familiar with cyclist rights or the idea that I could possibly be off the road or injured. He just did not care, he had a quota to meet, as far as I was concerned, and that was that. As well, that being an issue, this issue of cyclists having to carry licenses, which we've been cited for previously, it's my understanding that William Bratton has a moratorium on that issue, about cyclists having cyclist licenses. Those licenses were only to basically account for stolen bikes, and that's going through its process, but if that's in a moratorium, then we, as cyclists, should not be cited for not having cyclist licenses. Many of us here have been cited for those, and we would appreciate a memorandum to be once again passed with the LAPD stating as such that it is in moratorium and should not be, we, as cyclists, should not be cited for not having cyclist license. It's very simple. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Veronica's next, after that is Enzi.
Good morning. I think the council has the power to bring on a fine for motorists that harass cyclists. I think that would be the only solution that the police would actually implement, because then there'd be money involved. The police need to be more consistent with their behavior to cyclists, and LAPD needs to protect the weakest on the road, which are pedestrians and bicyclists, scooters. We need to be safe on the road, and only the police can do this. Their inconsistency shows that they have no training in dealing with bicycles, because they always give the upper hand to the motorists, and they've let motorists go on all occasions. I think that we ride at night because there's a reason, it's very dangerous to ride during the day. There's less cars at night, and I don't think it's the motorists' fault or the cyclists. The LAPD has not given any funds to bicycling, they've turned it over to road projects for at least five years that I've known. Even if they connected all the bikeways, it would only be 60 million, and that was the cost of just the bridge over a valley that was just done. I think that's it, I think, there's one more thing I had to say. 44 seconds. Oh, the streets right now, the LAPD standard is 12 feet. That only gives two feet for the cyclists, and that's the most dangerous. There is also a 10-foot standard, which means that they have to show the road, and a 14-foot standard, but they only use a 12-foot standard. So if the infrastructure would have changed, just paint the lines a little different, remove parking, it would be a lot safer, as people would be in trouble, everything would be better to bicycle, it would be simple. It's all in the DOT. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Enzi is our next speaker. After Enzi is DJ Wheels. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you for taking your time and listening to us. My name is Enzi. I was born and raised in Hungary when it was still on the communist rule. Wherever I traveled, wherever I lived, I was always treated as a second-class citizen, until I set foot on American soil. In America, I set freedom and equality like never before, until I got on my bicycle. On my bike, I've been harassed, I've been knocked down, I've had things thrown at me, I've been left lying on the street without any help from law enforcement or drivers, without any response from our city leadership. I'm asking you, why did I lose my rights when I got on my bike? Where are our council members to protect cyclists in their council district? Where are the council members when we ask to be protected, not only from dangerous drivers, but also from uneducated and abusive police officers? I'm asking you to make the city green by protecting the vulnerable, by endorsing the Cyclist Bill of Rights, by demanding from the LAPD to be sensitive and to be educated about cyclist rights on the road. And I'm asking for the full support of our judicial system, and I expect that those who endanger, injure, or kill cyclists to be dealt with the full extent of the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Enzi. Our next speaker is DJ Wheels. After that is Elizabeth Acosta.
Good morning, council members, thank you all for your time. My name is actually Daniel, I'm born and raised in Los Angeles, I rode my bike today approximately 12 miles from Glassell Park to be here this morning and speak with you. Rather than rehash a lot of these horror stories that you've been hearing so far, and that you probably will hear a few more, I'd actually like to give you a little bit of free legal advice. I'm also an attorney, I've worked defending public entities such as cities, police departments, fire departments, in my young legal career. There are a lot of civil actions that get filed against public entities when their members, representatives, do not act reasonably. It's simple negligence. Sometimes there are civil rights violations. These things happen a lot, they cost a lot of money, there's a lot of time and resources wasted by defending the city or whatever particular person is being sued. Why are we going to waste our time, our money, and our resources and our tax dollars on defending the unreasonableness of a few of our members, of our public entities? Why not be more proactive? You have a few options, you could do nothing and continue to take in all these complaints, these lawsuits, and waste our money. Or we could be more proactive. We could institute such things as complete streets initiatives, where we actually divide up the streets for the motorists, for the pedestrians, and for the cyclists. We can make it safer. There have been such things brought up as education programs. Or urging our police force to use better reason, better care. Look, it's all about common sense. Are we going to waste money allowing these things to keep going on, or are we going to be more proactive and try to avoid it? Let's use our money wisely and invest it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Elizabeth Acosta is our next speaker. After that will be Chuck Tenen.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth, and I'm a cyclist in West Hollywood. And I just wanted to say that, as a cyclist, a driver, and most importantly, a citizen, the Hummer incident is a tremendous disappointment and a heinous display of a lack of compassion and respect, of respect and of duty. When I call 911, I want to be able to trust the officer who comes to my aid. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Chuck Tenen is our next speaker. Chuck Tenen is our next speaker. After that is Frank Scheftel.
Good morning, President Carzetti and council members. As you know, Councilwoman Wendy Gruele, CD2, will take office as city comptroller on July the first. We wish her well. It will leave a vacancy in our council district. It will be sad to see her go, as she did a lot for the community. Her constituents will miss her leadership and her warmth outreach. The special election in July is very important, to elect a qualified candidate that can hopefully fill her shoes and have twenty arms and be in twenty places at the same time as she did in her many accomplishments and continuous hard-working efforts. There's approximately ten candidates running. Please make sure you make a good, wise decision in who you elect, because it will have a major impact on the people of Valley Village, Studio City, Sherman Oaks, and Sunland Tahunga in upholding her good work in CD2 and moving it forward and making the neighborhood a better place to live in. Also, the new Grammy Museum in Los Angeles will connect youth through music and will offer educational programs, and to encourage at-risk youth in scholastic achievement are necessary to build our confidence to become tomorrow's leaders. The director is taking me on a personal tour of their Twenty-First Century Art Institute to get involved as a stakeholder. And also, Marina Del Rey Sport Fishing has a new boat, the Spitfire, will offer educational whale and nature excursions, take kids from all over the city to view and experience the wonderful sea creatures in our nearby ocean with a qualified expert. It will be a very, very affordable program. Thank you, and happy Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Frank Scheftel is our next speaker. After that is Robin Briano.
Hello, I'm Frank Scheftel. I appreciate the speaker. Before me, actually, I'm going to be one of those candidates running for CD2 for Wendy's seat, so I hope to be joining you all around the horseshoe at some point. But the reason that I'm here today is I want to talk about an issue that's really important and that is getting really out of hand, and that is the medical marijuana issue. The city council passed a moratorium on August 7th. While they could look at the issue and come up with regulations and rules and things, nothing was done during that time. The moratorium is up, and every single day, a new collective, a new dispensary, a new pot shop is opening up around Los Angeles. They are unregulated, they're not being, and nothing is being enforced. They're opening up across the street from schools. In the last week, five alone opened up in North Hollywood in this area, and this is all within a four-block area. You can go from Wendy's office in North Hollywood and walk to five different collectives. You can leave the city council area here and walk to a dozen different places. This is really, really a disgrace. It's a shame. The city council needs to act on this. They need to set regulations and guidelines. They need to listen to the community. The community is outraged over this. And I'm speaking as an owner of a medical marijuana collective. I did it the right way, okay? I'm on the list of one hundred and eighty-six registered collectives that the city made us do before you put the moratorium into effect. Now there's over five hundred of them. What are we going to do about this? We need to do something. I really urge the city council to take a look. There have been committees that have put some things together. I know we've been waiting for the new attorney to be elected because we want to have some fresh eyes and a fresh view, but it's overdue. We really need to do something, and I'm here to urge the city council to please take a look at this and do something about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have a couple members on the bicyclist, we have some more bicyclists that are going to speak, so I'm going to wait for Mr. Rosenau, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rizar, on this, did you want to say something? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Rizar.
Thank you, Speaker, for coming to speak. I can't speak too long on this because of the Brown Act hasn't been agendized, but you are correct. There is a problem with the way we created our ICO. I put in a motion that would hopefully fix that, because they are sprouting up and we're not regulating those that are sprouting up, and it doesn't help those who are abiding by Proposition 215 and doing it the right way. So I'll go over and talk to you more, but I did want to let the public know that we're going to do something to hopefully fix that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rizar. Robin Briano?
Tom DeBunce, second in the morning.
Issue two.
On this issue?
Briefly.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Briefly. Again, I just want people to know, it's disconcerting to say that we haven't done anything. Actually, we've been working really hard on this. We had a task force that worked on coming up with guidelines, because this was our issue. We did not want the illegal ones to crop up. Before, we had our regulations and guidelines in place, the Attorney General came down with guidelines for cities and counties. Our recommendations followed that, but frankly, our own city attorney came back with an ordinance that was not what the task force had wanted, knowing that your members here, so we sent it back.
I'm not taking it personally, but you have gone fast. Sure, you're not, Dan. Robin Briano is our next speaker for general public comment. After Robin is Nicole Arneson. Good morning.
Morning. Thank you. I'm a bicycle rider too, you know, and the problem that I have seen is that when we go to eat somewhere, someplace like a mall or wherever we go, they treat us like, they kick us out of wherever we go. We gotta be scouted naturally for places where to eat or drink or something, you know? I don't know why these things are happening when, I don't know why. So, no, no, what I'm saying is, I'm asking for more respect when we go to a mall or someplace, you know, that they, we get kicked every time that we go to just refill ourselves. That's it, I'll say.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Robin. Nicole Arneson is next. After Nicole will be Matthew Simmons. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm just here in support of my friend who was struck by a motorist, and we're all here to support them, and they were not supported by the police. And I commute and live and work in LA by bike, and I expect, you know, I've come to expect motorists don't understand that we're allowed to be on the road and that we have rights, like they do as drivers, and we are allowed to be there, and, you know, there's so many confrontations that you just have to accept that the motorists don't know. But I expect that our police know. They should know what we are entitled to, and they should protect us. And I would like to see you do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matthew Simmons? After that is Tarsus Rodriguez.
I'm sorry, I think I accidentally submitted two cards.
Okay.
I would like to request that they put a bike rack in front of the city hall, though.
Hello and good morning. I'm Tarsus, and I am a cyclist from South Central. I bike all over the city, west LA, you know, South Central. I go to Culver City, K-Town, I'm sometimes in East LA, and it's ridiculous how many times a day I am harassed on the streets. Also, I notice a lot of these streets need improvement, and that's why we start coming into the lanes where we shouldn't be, like all of Woolshire. It's ridiculous how many potholes there are. I've gotten several flats, I've been stranded out there at two in the morning trying to get home, trying to be safe, and you know what? We are loving community. All of these people, all of these people want a better lifestyle. We work hard for what we own, and we would like to see some respect, and I would like for change, some respect, and I want to see you guys strive to make a difference, because I, as a person, as a citizen, I do my part, and, you know, I'm someone's daughter, I'm someone's sister, and I want to be loved the way that you would love your cherished ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Tarsus. Thank you. Joe Borfo is our next speaker, and after that is Ian Marchbanks.
Good morning. My name is Joe Borfo, and I ride a bicycle in LA. And I'm sure you all heard about the Hummer incident. Swine flu! Oh, look, I got some of your attention. Oh, okay.
We're listening, sir. We're listening.
Apparently, the message the cycling community is trying to give out is not working, and that message is, "LAPD hates bikes." And what I want to say is, I've been harassed going to work. I've been pulled over and detained and questioned extensively, just because I'm riding my bicycle to work. It makes me, I mean, I've been in an incident where there was an accident, and I've called 911 with a fellow cyclist that was hurt, and I was blown off, basically, by the 911 person, because I was on a bicycle. It makes me feel like a lower-class citizen, or not important. There are citizens traveling, you know, commuting every day by vehicle, and I choose to commute by two wheels and pedals. And apparently, if you're a Hummer and you hit a cyclist in front of a cop, you can get away with it scot-free. We've been reminded in the cycling community about the way we've been treated by, every time a cyclist is killed by a, in a road rage incident or a, what do you call it, hit-and-run, we put up a thing called a ghost bike, and this ghost bike represents that person. And we've had two this last month. I want to ask you, can the LAPD please respect us and as citizens and commuters, and protect us as that?
Thank you, Mr. Borfo. Thank you very much. Ian Marchbanks is our next speaker. After Ian Marchbanks will be Krista Carlson. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ian Marchbanks. I'm a cyclist. I live in West Los Angeles, and I bike over here to be here today. I want to bring to your attention, this is the Cyclist Bill of Rights that was approved by this council, and I'll read two of these to you. Number three, cyclists have the right to the full support of educated law enforcement. I'm going to echo some of the things that Joe said. Also, number four, cyclists have the right to the full support of our judicial system and the right to be expected that those who endanger, injure, or kill cyclists be dealt with to the full extent of the law. And I just feel that this is absolutely not the case. I feel that the LAPD does not support us, they do not understand the laws that pertain to cyclists. And in the nine months since I started commuting by bicycle, I've been pulled over, detained, ticketed, questioned several times in the five miles between my house and my job. Several times, on my way home from dinner with my girlfriend, pulled over for not riding on the sidewalk, because so many police do not know the law. They do not understand it. They do not care. They just go off their intuition and just enforce the law however they see fit. They expect cyclists to ride single file on the very right side of the road, right in the door zone where cyclists are a danger to turning out cars, to opening doors. This is deadly stuff here, and the police don't understand it. They don't want to listen to us when we say it. So we need you to tell them that what they're doing, what they're telling us to do, how they're telling us to ride, is endangering our lives, and they need to understand what we're doing out there, why we're riding in the lane. I also support Roblox's comments about social rides. Police are endangering people by driving their cars into the masses. I mean, where is common sense here? You guys have to tell them to have some, because they are not doing it on their own. Lieutenants driving their cars into groups of cyclists.
Thank you, Ian. Appreciate your comments.
I'm sorry, I'm very upset about this, because some of my friends, their lives were for us.
Thank you, sir. Sorry. We have to try to stay as fair as possible, so I can ask you to conclude. Krista Carlson will be our next speaker.
I want you guys to please ask the police to respect law.
Thank you, sir. We have to bring Ms. Carlson forward now. Thank you. Shane Cox Quentin will be after that.
I've already spoken, you can move to the next person.
Okay, thank you. That's right, you did. Thank you. Shane Cox Quentin?
Hi, my name is Shane Quentin. I've been riding my bike as a commuter for about a year. I've been a lifelong resident of Los Angeles. I'm twenty years old. I've been riding a bike my whole life, or since, you know, I was like five and learned how to ride with training wheels. Just really quick, I'd just like to say of cycling, it's cheap, it helps fight obesity, reduces our reliance on foreign oil, reduces pollution, and it reduces congestion. I have seen the LAPD being really great towards cyclists, but I've also seen them act really unprofessionally. I'd just like to say LA is a great city to ride a bike in. It's flat and the weather's good, and let's see some more bike lanes, and let's make it a better place for cyclists.
Thank you. Very much appreciate your comments. Gabriela Giorgio? After that is Stephen Carter III.
I'd like to voice my opinion on something very important to me, is also how the streets need to be paved. There are so many holes, bumps, that I've fallen off my bike numerous times, scraped, hurt myself, and I feel like that's one of, very important, and that needs to be taken care of as soon as possible, because there are streets on this, in LA, that they're just not fit for people who have skinny tires, things like that. It's very, very important. Also, a lot of the cyclists here have been talking about educating the LAPD. Not only that, but I feel that the motorists, they need to be educated. So, when they go to get their license, they should be educated more on the rights of cyclists, not just the LAPD. I think everyone needs education on this, including pedestrians, just anyone needs to know that we have the rights to be on the road. And my bike is one of the most important things to me, and, you know, to other people it may seem silly, it may seem dumb, but because of that importance, I would love to see you guys support us and support the cycling community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen Carter is our next speaker. Stephen Carter III. And then Candita Morris.
Good morning, council. Thank you for having me. I'm just here to show support for my fellow cyclists. We're a community of equality, friendship, love, and respect. We abide the laws as best as we can, and we listen to everything, we cooperate as well as we can, and that's all I'm asking for, from the police, the LAPD, is just to show the same amount of respect, because, you know, statistically, it's a lot safer to ride on the street than the sidewalk, but as the months progress, it's getting a lot more dangerous. We're losing respect from fellow motorists and the police as well. Let's just keep it safe, you know? We don't want to get hurt, we want to go home, we want to stay alive, and, you know, we're living in constant fear from the blacks and black and whites, the police cars. Every time we see a police car, people begin to scatter, it starts to get a lot more dangerous for us, and we don't want to do that anymore. We want to feel safe around the police, not intimidated. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Steve Vitano?
Good morning. I'm a citizen, I live in Chavez Ravine. My country tis a V, sweet land of liberty. As a child, like many of us, I learned this song about the same time I learned to ride a bike. In the ensuing years, I learned that not all wrongs have been righted, that the concepts of freedom and justice, equality, need to be protected, and that it would be a struggle, a struggle to maintain, well, well, that sweet land of liberty. You, ladies and gentlemen, are the people charged with the duty to help us see those ideas become a reality. We as cyclists are a growing minority. Every day you see more and more people taking to the roads on bicycles. We desire the respect, the consideration that the law entitles us to. We want to be treated fairly. When someone takes a two-ton vehicle and uses it against us, they may as well have used a gun. Have any drivers been injured by a cyclist anywhere? They say that the judgment of a society is measured by how those who are most vulnerable get treated. On the roadways, we are the most vulnerable. When the instrument of our government treats us like second-hand, undesirable citizens, you have a problem. Look at how many of us have come out today. We are all colors, all ages, men, women. We represent the experience of thousands. For every individual here, there are hundreds more. There wasn't an organization that brought us here. We are connected through friends, acquaintances, the internet. We have jobs and families. We are green, we are motivated, we are active, and we do vote. We represent a lot of what is changing in our country right now. Our nation is changing, and it is your duty to help us implement those changes. You need to change perceptions and the actions of the police. I would personally like to thank the councilman from my district, Ed Reyes, for all of the progressive cycling things that he's done. When it's time, I'll put a sign in my front yard, and like the song says, "Let freedom ring." Another song says, "We will bring on the noise."
Thank you. Joanne Ivanek Garb. Joanne Ivanek, come on forward. After that is Russell. You can?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I missed last month's session here, and I'm definitely missing it within my soul. I'm not sure if the Budget and Finance Committee met yesterday or the day before regarding, they did, they done budget cuts, and I just want to talk about how important the neighborhood council system is to each community. Not only is it as part of the city charter, but also what it does for each community, and how much we're gaining within each community. So if there's not enough people to approve it, now things are taking two to six months to get through, what's it going to be when they have fewer people there? I know everybody's taking cuts. And they took a cut of 39% last year. So, you know, to cut them 48% now is really a substantial cut. And being that it is part of the city charter, it's harder to say within ourselves that this is a necessary cut. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Russell, you can?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy May Day, the real workers' holiday. Previously, I spoke to the Transportation Committee of this body regarding the use by certain individual LAPD officers of the archaic bike licensing law as a tool of harassment. And subsequent to that, I was given to understand that Chief Bratton, to his credit, had implemented a moratorium on enforcement of that law. But in the meantime, I keep hearing of people, cyclists on the street, being either asked for bike licenses or even being given tickets for bike licenses, which makes me wonder whether the entire LAPD, all the officers on the street, got the memo. And the fact that I have to wonder that makes me wonder whether there was in fact a memo and whether that memo was circulated in such a way as to reach the average officer on the street. So I was wondering if the city council could possibly make it its business to find out whether such a memo was ever issued and if not, to make sure that that happens. Moving along, I was not present for the Hummer incident, as we now all call it. But I was present on a group ride a couple of Fridays ago when a bunch of us were proceeding through a green light. Folks, a green light. Did everybody get that? Did the transcriptionists get that? A green light, okay. When an LAPD officer recklessly charged into the crowd with his car, causing at least one cyclist to lose control of her bicycle and fall off with other cyclists approaching her, one of the cyclists got out of the car and grabbed the first... I'm sorry, one of the officers got out of the car and grabbed the first cyclist they found and cited him for god knows what. And when I saw that and when I heard about the Hummer incident, the first thing I thought was, man, that Hummer incident sure sounds a lot like what happened on that group ride, except it wasn't a reckless Hummer driver, it was a reckless cop. So I have no doubt that these are bad apples doing this stuff, but make no mistake, these are some bad, bad apples. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julia DeMeyer? DeMeyer? Is it Julia? Sorry. Tell me how you say it. DeMeyer?
Hi, my name is Julia Danziger.
Danziger, okay. Sorry, not even close.
I would just like to mention a little something about everybody's attitude when they're on the road, bike riding. We don't create any kind of hostility towards police officers or drivers unless we're approached first. And if we do, I'm sorry about that, but I really, I feel like we should all have a better attitude about cyclists on the road. Because we're not trying to do... We're not trying to like block cars or do anything bad. And I feel like we're being harassed like we are intentionally doing something wrong. And we're not. So I would just appreciate it if everybody could be a little bit nicer to us. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Danziger. Dorothy Ley is our next speaker.
Good morning. One more time? Oh, I'm...
Good morning.
Hi, everyone. Just got here on the Orange Line Bike Path, which is actually, I want to point out some positive things the city is doing, which thank you for supporting bicycling, but we need to do a lot more. And what I want to make two asks, I work for Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, that the city support a state bill similar to the state of Kentucky that specifically calls a motorist or cyclists and cyclists or motorists and pedestrian incident a specifically vehicular assault on cyclists and pedestrians. That is an actual specific crime, not just, you know, a misdemeanor or whatever that we want to call it. We actually categorize it something specific so that there are actual specific penalties for this that are more stringent than now. The other ask I want to make is that the city releases the now long overdue bicycle master plan and implement it to the fullest. Because this is one very tangible way that the city can make tangible improvements for cyclists' lives and save cyclists' lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Candido Morris is our next speaker.
Mr. President, if all the cyclists gone before me, I would like to hold until they've all spoken. Have you all spoken?
There's no more bicyclist cards, Mr. Morris. So if you'd like to go, Mr. Morris?
Well, if you don't mind, sir, I just...
Thanks, Candido.
You're one of us.
We, uh...
One of us!
One of us!
Thank you, guys.
One of the cyclist's bill of rights.
Mister, on the bicyclist up, Mr. Rosendahl? I think there's a few that would like to respond if you'd like to stay forward, but either way, it's up to you. Mister Rosendahl first? And just as a reminder to folks out there, we really appreciate everybody taking the time and coming down here. Secondly, because it's not been agendized, to give fair notice to everybody in the public, we can only respond for about 50 words per member. So try to keep... Please remember that so we're not in violation of the Brown Act on not agendizing this. Of course, any motions can always be made in session to be put in a future meeting as well. So Mister Rosendahl is the first speaker. Mister Reyes, Ms. Hahn, Mister Labonge, Ms. Grul. Mister Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to thank the cyclists for coming here and pointing out something to us that frankly I didn't know about what just happened the other day. Story one. Story two, as for the bicycle bill of rights, it's going back quickly to Ms. Grul's committee where it will be focused on and policies will be developed. Third, we have several motions here that have just been circulated. And the one motion that has just been circulated, signed by four members of the council, Ms. Hahn, Mister Reyes, and Mister Labonge, and if I could read it into the record, numerous incidences have been reported related to bicycle and vehicle collisions and aggressive motorist attitudes to law-abiding people riding bicycles. Complaints have also been raised regarding the treatment of cyclists by the LAPD. It is critical that the city respond to these situations and respond appropriately. Therefore, we move that the city council direct the Los Angeles Police Department to report on recent bicycle incidences and conflicts between cyclists and motorists, as well as an effort to increase police officer training related to the bicycling activities and applicable regulations and law. This is a motion put in. And Mister Reyes is in the process of another motion that I'm sure he will talk about that we also have agreed to. And I just want to apologize for things that languish in the bureaucracy. It's frustrating for us elected as well. And hopefully, we can be more effective. I did experience that Mandeville incident that was in my district. And out of that, we have taken some action, including the bicycle bill of rights. But on behalf of all of us here, we need to move quicker and faster on these issues. And we obviously need to change the culture of the automobile and realize that the bicyclist have as much rights as the automobile to use the roads. Thank you.
Mister Reyes?
We'll be introducing a motion that essentially says, we move to have the Police Department, Department of Transportation, and the Planning Department direct to report with recommendations for establishing a bicycle safety and licensing program for the city of LA. So with the three entities that are one, using our planning police powers, the police itself, as well as DOT, to actually put together an entity that will talk about bike safety. So we can train the police through that. We can move on some of these planning principles and policies we've been trying to put on the table. But just more importantly, we're going through Budget and Finance today. If I can have a verbal motion that says, and I'll put this on the floor, I can't do it now, I can't do it now, I know that. But essentially asking the staffing of the bicycle programs in DOT and planning and what's necessary to implement these programs. I believe the last time, we only had three staff persons in DOT working on bicycle issues for the whole city. And that has to change. So thank you.
Ms. Hahn? 50 words, Ms. Hahn?
No, I was actually just going to talk about introducing the motion that Councilwoman Rosendahl talked about. So we're going to ask for a full report from LAPD, particularly on the incident that you talked about. It's very disturbing naturally to hear this. I don't know what happened. I wasn't there. But clearly, you're absolutely right. I mean, we are charged with making sure that all the residents of Los Angeles are safe. And you're absolutely right. You're... If there's anybody that's greening LA, it's our cyclists in Los Angeles. You definitely are a solution to our problems. And I don't like hearing what I've heard this morning. We need to get along in LA, all of us. But we're going to ask for a full investigation on what happened in this particular incident so that if justice needs to happen, it will happen.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mister Labonge briefly? And the city attorney really does want to remind folks of the Brown Act.
Question, I want to address the clerk, Mister City Attorney. Can I be excused for 10 minutes to meet with these people outside to talk about their issues?
Our attendance, we will... We do have a couple of people excused early, so why don't you check them?
I want to go talk.
I know.
And listen.
We will see if we can, Mister Labonge, and still retain quiet.
I'll be outside. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, if I could just say what the Brown Act says regarding this, on their own initiative or in response to questions posed by the public, a member of a legislative body or its staff may ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement... Doesn't define brief. Or make a brief report on his or her own activities. Furthermore, a member of the legislative body or the body itself, subject to rules or procedures of the legislative body, may provide a reference to that.
Thank you, Dion. Before people leave. Ms. Grul is next, and then Mister Cardenas, Ms. Grul. Folks, before you leave, real quick, there's two other speakers.
Mister Labonge, before you meet with them, maybe they can hear the rest of us? I think that for all of us, as we have held in the committee, and I appreciate so many of the people who have been here on some tough issues in transportation, and we did adopt in the city and the Police Department not to have those bicycle licenses and not to enforce them. So your information that you provide us is critically important if in fact the police officers are doing that, because that was the direction of the city council as well as it was the Police Department. We have been pushing, and hopefully, we will let you know, within the next month when we get through budget, to be able to hear the bicycle plan, all the items that we did ask for those report backs. Because it is critical. And when we talk about greening Los Angeles and we talk about the environment, there's no more important issue than allowing people to ride safely in Los Angeles and to provide those bicycle paths and those bicycle areas and that they not be these short areas, Mr. Garcetti. So many of, I think, if you'd like, so many of us have introduced motions over the last couple of years and pushed things and the importance of the bicycle community. So I want to say thank you to all of you for being here today and for your voices. They are heard not only today but other days. And we look forward to having Los Angeles be a more bicycle-friendly city. Thank you very much.
Mister Cardenas?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for coming before the city council and exercising your democratic right to this open forum. But at the same time, please understand that you probably should duplicate this whole presentation to the Police Commission. Okay, so you answered that question. I hope they listen to you because that is actually the body most responsible for responding to these kinds of... This kind of information. And as you can see, that many of the council members, even though we don't have direct authority over the Police Department like the Police Commission does, there is going to be some actions and public information disseminated on some of the things you brought up. Thank you.
Thank you again, everybody. Again, under 50 words, we have very brief responses, but I know that we're working on a number of those issues together. We really appreciate folks that took the time out of their day to bike all the way here from all corners of the city. We do love cyclists and we will continue working with you to make sure this is a bike city here in LA. Thank you all very much. That was 32 words I've been told. And with that, we'll go back to public comment. Candido Morris will be our next speaker. And after that, Donna Perman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to the heart of the San Fernando Valley. And we hope that the cyclists are safe on the way going home. Be careful on Van Nuys Boulevard. It's a very dangerous, very dangerous street, so be careful. But, Mr. President, last month, we invited you to a hopeful opening of a restaurant on Van Nuys Boulevard. It hasn't happened yet, but with the help of Councilman Tony Cardenas and his office, hopefully we'll have that open within the month or next, within two months. And we hope to invite all of you there. Also, last Friday, you had bids downtown, the groups that organize the business improvement districts. And we hope that one day we can have that here on Van Nuys Boulevard. We have a small contract, but it's not enough. A bid would really help improve the conditions on Van Nuys Boulevard. I will do everything I can to improve safety issues because bicyclists need to be safe. But they talked about the Police Department in a negative way and, you know, I don't know, hopefully those issues will be resolved. But I want to talk about all the good things the Police Department worked with, with the children, with Dare, with Jeopardy, and also with our new boot camp that we have in Van Nuys. So the Police Department do a lot of good things in the city and to keep us safe. And for someone that knows both sides of it, I'm very appreciative of the LAPD. And that brings me to the Parker Center. I know some of you want to change the name. Mister Bradley's a wonderful person. If we're going to name the building, why don't we name City Hall after him? Mister William H. Parker from 1950 to 1966? I don't know who he was, but he was against corruption. And there's nothing I hate more than corruption. Because it's at the feet of our city here and we've got to make sure that we stop that. Now, I remember when we tried to name Delano Park after a great woman named Cindy Miskinkowski. Remember her? She was a great councilwoman here. And we had a big group of individuals who came out and spoke against her because they wanted the name of Cesar Chavez. Well, we have two plaques, one with Cesar Chavez and one with Cindy Miskinkowski. And I'll guarantee you, if Mister Chavez was here today, he would be ashamed because his name is on a building that should have been given to Cindy Miskinkowski. Because within five years, that woman did more for the Van Nuys area than anybody else did.
Thank you. Donna Perman?
Did a wonderful job and we hope that...
Is our next speaker. Ms. Perman? Sorry, we're out of time. Ms. Perman is our next speaker. Excuse me, sir. Thank you. If you can bring that up, the next public comment. We do it fairly for everybody, two minutes per speaker. Donna Perman's our next speaker. Thank you. We'll let you go a little extra too, so don't worry.
Okay. Thank you. Anyway, sorry I was late. I was... I'm scared to ride a bike and I took public transit. Anyway, I want to tell the bikes, remember that that's an alternative transportation. Anyway, I was expecting public comment after the Dog and Pony Show. Dun 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 dun. I was going to say, welcome to the Dog and Pony Show! But anyway, myself and Miriam have a really good man, we've heard a really good man yesterday who shows he cares for the people. He and his staff is available for public input and you can show that he knows exactly what he's going to do. I'm speaking about Tretanovich. If people, especially in West Los Angeles, wants a man who cares, then I would go and vote for him, especially people in West Los Angeles. I'm sorry his competitor couldn't show up. You need... You should have shown up because you need that CD support. People in West Los Angeles, you have a second avenue. Vote your conscience. Make the other one get a real job. I will not give up about talk about city employees. Okay, I'm done. I will not give up about talk... I'm talking about city employees now. In any given day, the city council will spend often, waste millions of dollars. You want to take it away from the city employees. You would ask hotel workers, stores, or bar workers who won concessions. Sorry, you won concessions, but now you want to give it up. All our costs are going up. Parking meters, trash fees, sales tax, cars registration fees. Our housing equity is going down. Salaries in terms of needed raises and forced furloughs. You don't need those salaries to go down. Sorry, you won concessions, but now you want to give it up. All our costs are going up. Parking meters, trash fees, sales tax, cars registration fees. Our housing equity is going down. Salaries in terms of needed raises and forced furloughs. You don't need, you don't need those salaries to go down. You need those salaries to go up. I wish that you would, let's show that the city council cares about city employees, and let's talk to our mayor, and let's come with better concessions, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Alacon for our next, excuse me, our first presentation. Mr. Alacon.
Or is it afternoon yet? No, not quite. Councilmembers, May Day is a lot of things to a lot of people. But for me, it is the 22nd anniversary of my son's death. And he was killed on Victory Boulevard by a suicidal driver who had given up and was driving about 97 miles an hour when he went through a red light and took my son's life and his great-grandmother's life. So it is with that in mind that I am happy to sponsor National Crime Victims Rights Week. Today, we'll be introducing a resolution in council, and we are joining with other cities, counties, states, and the federal government to recognize this week and call attention to the difficulties faced by victims of crime. On Wednesday, organizations from across the state rallied at the Capitol to recognize this week, and yesterday legislators held a special presentation on the floor of the Assembly. So today, I'll be very happy to introduce the resolution. For my part, with the help of people like Herb Wesson and Tony Cardenas, when we were in the legislature, I passed SB 1773, which provides assistance to counties by virtue of adding a fee on a fund that was established by Senator Ken Mattie for crimes that create trauma. And the first benefactor of that fund in the county of Los Angeles, which is, the fund, by the way, is called Richie's Fund in my son's name, and the first benefactor is Northridge Hospital. I believe I've said that before. And so, Mr. Smith, I'm very pleased to inform you that we are within 30 days of getting state approval on the first pediatric trauma care center in the San Fernando Valley. We're not there yet. So with the help of Assemblymember Blumenfeld and Senator Padilla, we'll get the necessary state alignment to make the approvals within, hopefully, a month or six weeks. So that would set the course for a six-to-nine-month period of implementation. So that's why I am pleased to introduce the resolution. But I also want to recognize this week, because every year, 33 million Americans are victims of crimes. These crimes could be as terrifying as rape and murder or more subtle as identity theft. But no matter what the crime, each and every victim carries with them the scars of being a victim of a crime. As we all know, these victims may suffer emotional, physical, psychological, financial harm as a result of these crimes against them. And while being a victim of a crime is an experience that can have obvious devastating effects, the good news is that there are resources available for crime victims. Here in the city of Los Angeles, we have the Victims Assistance and Compensation Programs providing vital and supportive services for victims that help individuals and families and communities cope with the impact of crime. Today is the, or this year is the anniversary, the 25th anniversary, of the Victims of Crime Act, passed by Congress in 1984. This act affirmed the national commitment to helping victims rebuild their lives by establishing the Crime Victims Fund, a major source of funding for service and compensation to victims of crime throughout the United States. The Crime Victims Fund is funded by fines and penalties levied on offenders and affirms the principle that those who commit crimes should be held accountable for those actions. The Crime Victims Fund supports more than 4,400 state and local victim assistance programs, including rape crisis centers, domestic violence shelters, victims assistance and law enforcement and prosecutors' offices, and other direct services that help provide to millions of victims each year the support they need. The fund also pays for medical and counseling costs, funeral bills, crime scene cleanup, and lost wages for victims of crimes. And so I think it's appropriate that we reiterate this pledge each year and have this Crime Victims Week to remind people that these resources are available. It isn't usually until you are a victim of a crime that you think about the need for these resources. So it's always good to plant a seed so that when the crime occurs and the victim has a complaint, they will be able to think about the resources and get in contact with the appropriate officials. Today, I'd like to recognize a very special program. It's sort of in response to those who have committed the crime. We can't just assume that the victims are the only ones that need assistance. The truth is, we can stop a lot of victimization by reducing the crimes of those who committed them in the first place. That's the notion of rehabilitation that is all too often forgotten in our system. But the group I'm recognizing today is unique, because they assist with the standard victim assistance and compensation, but also have a victim-focused offender program that has been replicated nationally. The curriculum of the victim-focused offender program covers specific crime topics, includes video clips and activities to reinforce learning. Victim speakers are often advised, involved to personalize the impact of crime by speaking face-to-face in the classroom to juvenile offenders. Plus, offender restitution training is provided to every Department of Juvenile Justice offender to educate offenders regarding restitution and its governing laws, improve offender accountability and personal responsibility, and has been shown to improve greater pro-social behavior and community reintegration. So I wanted to recognize the parole folks who have put together this amazing program. With us is the Supervising Parole Agent with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation Division of Juvenile Justice to talk about the importance of their work and National Crime Victims Rights Week. Oh, I'm sorry. It's James Driver, the Supervising Parole Agent.
Well, good morning, councilmembers. One of the things that I'd like to begin with is saying that bad news travels fast, and you all know that. As soon as something goes wrong, everyone seems to know about it. In the Department of Corrections and the Juvenile Division, formerly the California Youth Authority, many of you have heard of us, and you've heard or you've read something about our agency, some of it bad, some of it good. But here this morning, what I'd like to address to the council and to you all is that oftentimes these young men and young women come to us very broken, battered, bruised, and our responsibility is to help rehabilitate, fix them, restore them back, and return them to the communities in which they came. And our job, although it be a very difficult task, it's one we take very seriously. With that said, some of the programs that we address in Victims Rights Weeks nationally are things like the Mothers Against Drunk Driving. We have speakers that come out. We have individuals that may have perpetrated a crime and caused a victim. Now it is their opportunity to give back to the community. They speak directly often to some of these family members in which they've harmed. They speak to the communities in which they've done devastating things to, and their goal is to try to restore themselves back to the community. One of the things that we have going on currently is the Clothesline Project. That is a T-shirt that's passed around statewide, where individuals write down some of the crimes that they've committed. They address their victims' issues, and they try to restore that victim as whole as possible. In the case where you've committed the unthinkable, where you've taken a life of someone, there is no way to restore that victim. But the goal there is, is to try to return to the community and allow the community to receive that individual in a restorative mode. Some of the things that we have going on locally, we provide a food bank to its citizens right here in the city of Panorama. Excuse me, my voice is going. We provide a food bank, and the goal there is, is that the parolees which have committed harm in their community, they provide that outreach program themselves. They are responsible for providing the direct services to the community. They bag the food. They pass out the food, and they participate in programs like that. I also have an agent here who is a part of that restorative mode, Medicee McNeil. And what I'd like for her to do is talk a little bit about our educational program, because one of the things that we try to do is educate these young men and women about getting a high school diploma. And we have one of the largest, best, and fastest-growing educational parole systems statewide.
Thank you. Within our parole office, we have a high school program, which is sponsored from the Orange County Department of Education, in a tent originally was, you know, to assist our parolees and continue their education. But we found that in addition to our parolees, that they have needs within their families. So our high school program encompasses their family members, their sisters or brothers or other friends or relatives of theirs who haven't received their high school diploma. It started off with maybe, like, maybe 15 parolees. Last year, our school grew to 100 participants. We had 35 to graduate, and this year, we're in the process of getting prepared for our next graduation, which is going to be June the 26th. It's unfortunate to say, but one of the reasons that I really got involved with and really encouraged our parolees to get their high school diploma, because it's going to be probably one of their, not one of their last, but one of their major accomplishments in their lives. And we all know, you know, to get a job or to continue in our educational system, you know, going to college or community college, we need to have the basics, you know, from a high school diploma. So that's one of the main reasons that I've really been working very hard within our parole office to continue the educational focus of our high school program.
The final thing I'd like to wrap up with the council is that this is 25 years of rebuilding lives. That's the theme of this year's Victims Rights Week. And what I brought this morning are some ribbons. It's not a political statement, and the great thing about this is that, as the council member said, is that you really don't know or get involved with things such as Division of Juvenile Justice or with Victims Rights Week until you become a victim. This is an opportunity for you to stand up as a voice for many voices who's been silenced. So I'm going to leave some ribbons with you all, and all I'm asking is that you wear them, and it's just an acknowledgement that there are many victims out there, and it's your way of demonstrating that these victims have a voice.
Thank you. Can I have one?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I wanted to recognize this program, because we not only have to think of victimization as something that has occurred in the past, we have to think about how to reduce it in the future. It's exactly what this program is about, so I want to commend them for their work. I also want to mention that tomorrow, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, my office will join with the San Fernando Valley Juvenile Parole Office, where the parolees will be washing cars to benefit the Domestic Abuse Center. This is the way that we can improve the prospects so that victimization does not occur and reduce the crimes that might have otherwise been committed by these young people who are now committed to this program. The event will be at 8737 Van Nuys Boulevard in Panorama City, or just call my office at 818-756-9115 for further information. So let me present this certificate to James Driver, the Supervising Parole Agent, and Medicee McNeil, Parole Agent, to recognize their commitment to reducing crime by educating parolees who may not have had the opportunity to see the world from this perspective. And so thank you so much. We wish you continued success, and we thank you on behalf of those people who would otherwise be victimized, who will be freed from that terror.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And also, I have this resolution that recognizes National Crime Victims Week, which each of you signed. And again, a lot of people don't know about all the resources that are out there. I want to thank my colleagues for keeping those victims who approach your offices. I know each of us have people coming to our offices for all kinds of issues, and I want to thank you for keeping them informed. I would appreciate it if you posted something on your websites to inform people about National Crime Victims Rights Week and some of the services that are available by the city and other organizations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alacon. Madam Clerk, first order.
First item called special, Madam President, is item number six, and that was called special for cards.
Yes, Mr. Arnold Sacks, Downtown. Mr. Sacks, item number six.
Thank you. Item number six. Shovel-ready this, shovel-ready that, jobs here, jobs there. The duplicity in the funding. Today's agenda's item 10 and 11. Two bonds for the airport and stimulus funding for the construction at the airport. A garbage fee increase and stimulus funding for more police. You know what you don't hear in any of these projects? Call for a completion date. It would be nice, and it would really be helpful, if we can get a completion date on all these projects that are being wheeled out and yelled and shouted for and paraded and paraded in front of the public as solutions to your problems. We got them. We're going to do it. We are. We can. We will. When? You heard the bicyclists come in front of you and state that for years and months, they've been hearing about, oh, agenda item this and agenda item that. It's a recurring theme in the city council and the city chambers and the city's activities. So let's put a completion date along with some of these projects that are being called for. Then you can be held accountable. Years, a couple of years ago, you asked for an increase in the term limits to the third term, because it was work that needed to be finished. Well, we know thankfully that some of you will be termed out soon. But let's get a completion date on these jobs and these stimulus programs that you keep talking about, because otherwise, as usual, the public will be left holding the bag. Thank you.
Thank you. That item number six is before us. Madam Clerk, please.
Madam President, I don't believe there's any action on this one.
Okay, so would we receive an appeal or just continue?
Just no action. This is a standing item that's going to be on every Friday's agenda for the American Recovery Act Friday.
Great, thank you. Our next item is item number seven. Mr. Sacks, on item number seven.
Thank you again, item number seven. Very quickly, as I stated last, your last council meeting, in the newspapers on the beginning of this week, there was an article about slum landlords. When will that be investigated? When will the slum landlords be held accountable, be held accountable and have the same actions taken against them as people who cross and enter into the RAN escrow account program? How can a slum lord own buildings in LA for 25 years and be held accountable for, like, $1,000 in fines? Maybe somebody should answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Torque wise. Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number eight, and that was also called special for cards.
Yes, Gail McKenna, followed by Donna Perman, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Gail McKenna. I'm president of a nonprofit here in Los Angeles. I want to thank the city council for the support of the community events that they've done over the years. Millions of dollars have been raised by nonprofits here in Los Angeles to help support much-needed programs, and we look forward to having your support for community events fundraisers in the near future. We ourselves will have a fundraiser on September 11th and raise the awareness of women's health for ovarian cancer, and we hope you'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Ms. Perman?
Thank you. I ran out of time on the other one. I meant to say, when I said concessions, I mean to say, you need to give up perks. Make the CRA give that tax increment money. And these fee waivers. We have the Outwater Village Farmer's Market, $3,678. First Annual Expo for $4,770. Memorial Day Festival for $6,000. The only one I did like was the Officer Tommy Edward Scott Memorial. That's very important, because the officers who give up their lives is always to show that we care about city employees. I didn't mean that we should concede anything. You need to stop these fee waivers, the CRA taking our tax increment money. No CRA, no fee waivers. The problem is that we can't afford, yeah, it's nice to have a little teeny advance and stuff like things, but we can't afford it in these times, and they're asking people to give up their wildly needed raises, and so that, so that this minority of people who go there, the city employees have to pay for it. This is not right to do these fee waivers in a time, these like what Zuma Dog would say, the donut sprinklings and the ribbon cutting. We don't need to do these events. I'm sorry, but the people who go to these events, well, they come up with a small surcharge. Certainly, they can come to these events. certainly they can come to these events, and we need to stop taking it away from the city employees. How would that, people who go up here and talk about how wonderful these fee waivers, how would they like to say, okay, but you have to give up your next raise to be able to have them? Our city is going bankrupt, and we can't afford these fee waivers. So give them up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, downtown?
Yes, thank you. Again, you're having special events that are held on weekends, interfering with people's rights to worship. I have no problem with some of the special events, I just have a problem with being held on weekends. And the fact that when the marathon, the L.A. Marathon was heard as an agenda item, it was four religious leaders came before the council and said, it interferes with our congregation's ability to worship. No problem, let's change it to a Monday. Keeping that in mind and maintaining that status quo is what I'm looking for from the council. You should eliminate all these events on weekends. Somewhere in the city of L.A., somewhere, someone, an atheist wants to worship on a weekend, and there's an event being held that may interfere with his right to do so. Maintain your consistency. Otherwise, you make it seem like the action you took on the marathon was just a stupid agenda item, and it would reflect poorly on Frank McCourt's deep pockets. You don't want to do that, because then it would reflect poorly on you. Maintain your consistency, eliminate the events on a special, on the weekends, and let them be held on holidays like they do the Boston Marathon. You know, Patriots Day. It's good enough for Boston, it's certainly good enough for L.A., right? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, the next, this item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number eight, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes. Thank you. The next two items are item 10 and 11. Mr. Sacks had put in cards for this item, but he has reached his limit here today in council. So we do have Mr. Paul Edelman, who is here, Mr. Edelman, who's here. I know you don't need to speak unless there are questions. Thank you very much for your leadership on saving this property up there in Laurel Canyon and Moore Park. We look forward to working with you. So if there are no speakers on the queue, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item.
I'm sorry, Madam President, do you want it to do 10 and 11 together?
Yes, please. So we have before us items 10 and 11. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes. Thank you. Those items are approved. Thank you, Paul. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 12. That was called special, and there are, excuse me, there is an amending motion that has been distributed. Mr. Parks?
We asked to move it with the amending motion.
Anyone have questions? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 12, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 13, and that was also called special, and amending motion has been distributed to the council members.
I know, Ms. Hahn, you wanted to call the special. This is the item that we didn't have the full document. We had four changes that needed to be made, and the CLA and DOT have put that forward.
Right, I just had some questions about the reauthorization or the new authorization of the Safety Lou bill and the chances that this is really going to happen. Is my mic on? Because I knew it felt like my mic is on. Hello? Hello?
My name's Michael Weno. I'm with the Department of Transportation. My understanding is that the reauthorization bill will go through. There have been three previous bills, ICE, T21, Safety Lou. Without the bill, there are no transportation programs in the United States. And so the reauthorization bill establishes the programs that the federal government wants to fund and establishes maximum funding.
When do we think this is going to be reauthorized?
It's hard to say.
Is it reauthorized or is it actually a new?
It will be a new authorization bill, yes.
Because according to what expires in September, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
I don't know. I just, colleagues, from my understanding, from my reading, from my talking to people, it sounds like, you know, just based on what's going on, that this may not get authorized in September.
This is around through the CLA's office. We're hearing different things, and it's still a little bit earlier to determine. And we brought this forward right now because the House is looking at reauthorization, they're looking at what they call high priority projects. We wanted to get a list going. The Senate, it is not even starting in the Senate, so September's not that far away when you're talking about a bill of this size, so.
My sources are telling me that it's probably not going to happen in September. So I guess my question for us is, if there's some time lagging on this, do we have an opportunity to resubmit projects, add projects?
Definitely. This is a work in progress. And again, this list is for the earmarked projects, and we'll be coming forward with additional lists as things change, with the stimulus of how that's going to work together. So this is not your one and only opportunity to weigh in.
Right. Yes.
I was just going to say, we had heard several months ago they weren't going to do it this year. They had all the other things that they needed to get accomplished, then they pushed forward. And I think, as mentioned, you know, seven years ago, not everyone in the city was able to get some of those high priority projects. Some congressional districts were more effective in getting those projects in the Safety Lou. And so this time, there was a much bigger effort, and with thanks to all the council offices and CLA and DOT, to have a list that was much more comprehensive, that included areas. Because last time, the San Fernando Valley got a bulk of money, which was a good thing, but it didn't, a lot of the other parts of the district in the city did not. And so we just want to make sure if they move quickly, these are in there. If not, we can come back and add additional ones as we see where the status of the legislation is. And most importantly, getting to our, to your congressional members, particularly identifying priorities.
Right, which is what we did. But again, you know, we've put together this great list, we've tried to do a better job this time, but what I'm hearing is it's not going to be authorized. So, you know, I just want us to, you know, obviously stay on top of it and be able to be flexible, but be able to move quickly if, in fact, it is authorized.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And thank you for calling special, because we did need to have that amending motion. This amending motion will supersede any other additional attachments that we had, correct?
This is the final project list, yes.
For today. For today. For Ms. Hahn, for today. So, Madam Clerk, if we could please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes. Okay. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is special one, and that is a motion presented by Council Member Garcetti, submitted by Council Member Gruel, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Before we do that, we just, I don't know if anyone had questions on item number 14, which was a closed session item. I think we'd like to go ahead and go on consent, unless there's any questions. No one calling that item 14 special to go in closed session. We will just have that consent item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
I'm sorry, Madam President, and just for the record, that settlement in the case of Mary Cummings Cobb versus City of L.A., and the settlement amount is $130,000.
Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes. Thank you. We'll go back to special one, and Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. I recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has determined that a council resolution is required to support action to amend the Weatherization Assistance Program draft plan to allow local government agencies to apply directly to the state for this program through the ARRA. Written comments are due in Sacramento today, due to the deadline and due to the compressed timeframes in the ARRA grants. Immediate action is required. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Any questions on the findings? If not, we'll vote on the findings. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes. Thank you. That item is now before us. Anyone wish to comment? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes. Thank you. That item's been approved. Forthwith. Next item?
Council has motions for a posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Any announcements? Mr. Parks, would you like to announce that we will have a meeting here?
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to have a special meeting with the Budget and Finance Committee in these chambers, starting at 1:00 to continue the process. We will be back at City Hall on Monday at 9:00.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. DeBont.
Madam President, you know what building's having its 70th anniversary this Monday?
I do not know.
Union Station. And Mr. Weezer is going to be there at 8:30 on Wednesday morning. In 1939, the last great rail station was built in Los Angeles in the United States, and we're going to celebrate the 90th anniversary.
70th or 90th?
Excuse me, the 70th anniversary of Union Station.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. I'd like to invite everybody from the city, certainly people in the San Fernando Valley, to come together for the San Fernando Valley Chamber of Commerce Neighborhood Cleanup, which will be commencing at the Church on the Way facility at 14300 and 14800 Sherman Way, right here in Van Nuys. There's a lot of wonderful organizations that have been supporting this event with the San Fernando Valley Chamber of Commerce, and also with my office, Council District Six. A lot of work has gone into this, and we're going to have plenty of dumpsters and trash trucks and brooms and rakes and things of that nature to go ahead and clean up the community of Van Nuys. So we welcome everybody to come, and it starts tomorrow at 8:00, ready to start getting blisters and calluses at 8:00 in the morning Saturday, right here, May 2nd in Van Nuys, at those two locations on Sherman Way.
Thank you. Ms. Aragon, did you have one before I go to the other side? Mr. Aragon?
I'd like to reiterate that there'll be a car wash fundraiser to benefit the Domestic Abuse Center in Northridge in honor of the 2009 National Crime Victims Rights Week. The San Fernando Valley Juvenile Parole Office is hosting this car wash to benefit the Abuse Center. The proceeds will benefit the center, which offers therapy services for women and children, mediation, conciliation, and advocacy, among many other services, to the residents of the San Fernando Valley. The location of the car wash, please, I hope people will bring their cars to this good cause, at the Juvenile Parole Office, 8737 Van Nuys Boulevard in Panorama City. For more information, contact Jose Rodriguez of my staff at 818-756-8409. Also, I'd like to, on behalf of President Gruel, introduce this announcement that there will be an open house at the Bureau of Sanitation's East Valley District Yard from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This event will include tours of the yard, truck demonstrations, citrus tree adoptions, mulch giveaway, and other games and prizes. Kids will get to meet special guests, Mr. Recycle and Robo Blue. If you don't know who they are, come to this event and you will, you will know. What, you've recycled a few? Is that what you said? Okay, thank you. The location is the East Valley District Yard. How do you follow that? The location is the East Valley District Yard at 11050 Pendleton Street in Sun Valley. And for more information, contact the Bureau of Sanitation at 311.
Thank you. Mr. Ray is followed by Mr. Rosendale.
Yes, I want to invite everyone to the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council Cinco de Mayo Parade. It's a great parade. Cypress Park's been doing it for a few years now. It's building up, so I appreciate the Northeast getting involved, and it's a great parade. Also, the Alley Boys and Girls Club, along with the Los Angeles Dodgers, will be having our groundbreaking for our dream field. And it's a great field. Boys and Girls Club has been there since the 1930s, was the original Los Angeles Times Boys and Girls Club. It's one of the remaining Boys and Girls Club with the Los Angeles name on it. So the great Dodgers will be joining us in groundbreaking for much-needed facility in the Northeast as well. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendale?
Yes, Saturday at noon, Ms. Hahn and I will be in our district there on Lincoln Boulevard, between Manchester and the airport, dedicating for Tommy Scott, who was an officer that was killed in the line of duty, a memorial to him. So logistically, for folks, from 10:00 to 2:00, if you go into the airport, you need to go around and not take that particular route. But for people in the community at noon, Ms. Hahn and I will be there to dedicate a piece of the road in memory of Tommy Scott.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, or, excuse me, Sunday is the Fourth Annual Citrus Day in the Northwest San Fernando Valley, a project we started a few years ago. Pardon me? Well, yes, citrus all over the place, and particularly in parts of the area in the valley. There are thousands and thousands of pounds of fruit that go wasted every year. They fall off those trees. Last year, we collected 20,000 pounds of fruit, and that was a go-to the Valley Interfaith Council for their food banks. There are 170,000 people every day of the week that go without enough fruit in their diet or no fruit in their diet because they're economically challenged. And so this year, we're doing it again in Northwest Valley. Anyone from anywhere, and we get a lot of folks from Wendy's District and everybody, they bring them over. All the fire stations in the Northwest Valley will accept your fruit. Please wash them, drop them off, but Sunday from 8:00, 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 in the afternoon. We're collecting those at all the fire stations. Bring them on up. If you're in the area, go out and collect them. All we ask is that you wash them before you bring them over, and we will provide them to the Valley Interfaith Council for their food bank program, for the homeless shelters as well as the needy families that just don't get that. And it's going to go to waste if they don't pick it up. So we're very proud of that, and please bring them by our fire stations.
Congratulations, what a successful program. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Smith, that's a great thing there. Thank you, that's wonderful. If you're looking for something to do this weekend, the birthplace of the city of Los Angeles, as Mr. Tom LeBonge always wants to promote it, is having their annual Cinco de Mayo event, the victory of El Puebla for Mexico. Come by, there'll be stuff for all the family, music, food, and Mr. Tom LeBonge. So thank you. Saturday and Sunday, 11 till night.
You're a good man, Jose.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. LeBonge.
Reminder, it's Big Sunday Weekend, an event started by Temple Israel, by David Levinson and others from the temple that do things in the community. It's not only just Big Sunday, but things are happening on Big Sunday and Saturday. In Griffith Park, we will be with a number of folks in the Conservation Corps in an effort to restore one of the trails from the fire that is almost two years ago. But Big Sunday and a big shout-out for Temple Israel of Hollywood.
Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, we have several events going on in Los Angeles tomorrow on Saturday, but one of the things I think is really exciting for me is 8:00 a.m., we're going to be in the Harbor Gateway area, where we've taken one of the trailers that the Harbor Division LAPD has been living in until they got their new station, which we just dedicated Saturday night. One of those trailers, we've now moved into Harbor Gateway. We have volunteers coming tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. to hook it up, to paint it, to clean it up, and it's going to be the Cheryl Green Community Center, which we have really been talking about ever since Cheryl Green was killed several years ago in Los Angeles. So that will be one of the events taking place tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendale?
Just on a lighter note than the memorial, I want to mention that in Venice, the garden tours are again this weekend. And if you want to go to Venice, which is a great place to go, if you've done Griffith Park, come to Venice Beach, and the Venice Garden Tour starts at 2:00 in the afternoon, and you can look at some incredible gardens and have a wonderful time.
Thank you. We have adjourned motions, if we could ask everyone to please rise. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very, thank you very much. It's with great sadness I announce the adjournment of Aurelio Monreal, who passed away on April 5th, 2009. He was one month away from his 41st birthday, and he died from a massive heart attack on Sunday afternoon as he was fishing with some friends and his 10-year-old son. Aurelio was born and raised in the San Fernando Valley and graduated from Van Nuys High School in 1986. He has served the entire valley in many capacities since 1987. He was the president of the Alcariso Men's Golf Club, member of the Adopt a School Program, member of the Van Nuys Optimist Tournament Director for St. John Baptist de La Salle Golf Tournament, Director of Religion Evita, a member of Growing the Game, and a member on the Valley Interfaith Council Golf Committee. He was instrumental in the Toys for Todds efforts, and his efforts made Christmas special for over 25,000 needy children a reality. Most recently, Aurelio was working on establishing his own charity foundation when he passed away. If people would like to make donations, they can make them to the Monreal Family Trust Fund at Bank of America, or they can also call my office at 818-778-4000. Fund at Bank of America, or they can also call my office at 818-778-4999. Aurelio, he was my friend. I knew him as Lello. I met him when he was 18 years old, when I worked for Park Regency Real Estate, and he started off passing out flyers for all of us realtors. He eventually got his real estate license and became a top producer. But as you can see, he fell in love with giving back to the community. I got off the phone with him just a few days earlier, when he reminded me that he followed through with a commitment he had made for me. He had a fundraiser, a golf tournament, and he approached me one day, and just out of the blue, and said, "Do you know of any not-for-profit organizations that we could raise money for?" And I said, "Yes, there is. There's a young boy who passed away in Sun Valley. He gave away his organs and saved five lives." And just like that, Aurelio put on the golf tournament, delivered the check, because I wasn't... I was unable to deliver the check for them. It was appropriate that he deliver the check, because he did all the work. And he left me a message on my cellphone a couple of days before he died, saying that he delivered the check. Everything went well. The mother was very happy, and he appreciated the opportunity to help. And he also reminded me again, at the end of his message, "Let me know if there's any other organizations that need my help." Aurelio, as you can see, loved golf. He was my golfing partner. We used to golf once a week. We used to sneak out on a Wednesday afternoon, somehow, some way, and go golf together for many, many years. And then I got involved in politics and left the real estate industry, and we kind of lost touch a little bit. We were terrible golfers when we started. I'm still a terrible golfer, but he was a really good golfer with a big, big heart. And he loved it so much that he made sure that he incorporated in everything that he did. And over the years, in his capacity, he did what he could and raised tens and tens of thousands of dollars for many needy organizations while having fun doing it. And also, I'd like to point out that those of you who have been around in golf tournaments, and I've had golf tournaments put on for me as an elected official, and rightfully so, there's organizations and individuals who get paid $5,000 and $10,000 to put on a golf tournament. He always did it for free, just because he enjoyed it and wanted to make sure that he included the community as best he could. So, with that, again, we adjourn in the memory of Aurelio Lello Monreal, and he's survived by his wife Maria and his two young children, his daughter Amanda and his son Damien.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas? Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I'd like us to also adjourn in the memory of Thomas Lapis, who was... Who just passed away on April 26th. Tom was a World War II veteran with many commendations to his name. He was predeceased by his wife Diana, but he's survived by his daughter Ellen Papadakis, who's the wife of Tom Papadakis, who we know as the brother of John. They're both the proprietors at Papadakis Restaurant in downtown San Pedro. He's also survived by his son William Lapis and five grandchildren, Evan, Anna, Anthony Papadakis, Alexander, and Olympia Lapis. The funeral services were held today at St. Catherine Greek Orthodox Church in Redondo Beach, and in lieu of flowers, the family has asked that donations be made to the Greek Orthodox Metropolis of San Francisco Church Music Federation. And you can call our office for information on that.
Any other adjourned motions? Mr. LeBonge?
Thank you, members. I ask we adjourn in memory of Joe Kloss, who was a very self-taught painter, self-taught artist, who spent many years on the boardwalk at Pacific Ocean Park in Venice and in Santa Monica. And also, he defended many of the locals down there, including those in Muscle Beach. Over the years, he got very involved in Griffith Park, and for over 40 years, he was the head of the Griffith Park Athletic Club, which are a group of spirited hikers who would march up and down the hill. And there's a Joe Kloss water stop right next to the Vista del Val hillis spot there. Joe Kloss, survived by his wife Mary Jean and their three daughters, I ask we adjourn in his memory. And, Madam President, also, I ask we adjourn in memory of a great artist, internationally-known Ernie Barnes, who was a great athlete and played professional football for the Denver Broncos and the New York Jets. At that time, the owner of the New York Jets saw his talents and encouraged Ernie to do more. He was our official artist for the 1984 Games. You have seen his work. He's truly a beautiful man who went too early. He died just recently at the age of 70. He's survived by his wife of 25 years, Bernie, and their five children, Sean, Deidre, Aaron, Paige, and Michael. I ask Mr. Parks to join with me and the great Ernie Barnes, a tremendous artist and athlete and humanitarian.
I think we all members.
All members.
All members, I agree. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So, with a heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Ruben Villarreal. Ruben was my first campaign manager, and I wouldn't be here today were it not for the work that he did. We were introduced by a mutual friend almost 10 years ago, and we all go through campaigns, and we know what it's like in those early days when a few people think you're going to win, and nobody else is there. It's just you and an empty couple of desks and a couple of phones. And Ruben had been working at Southwest Voter Registration Education Project for a long time, where he probably registered literally tens of thousands of people himself. He was one of their top organizers. And it was through James Acevedo and Rob Vincent, both of whom different people here know for different reasons, that I met Ruben. Didn't know him well at first, and came to really know and love this man, who was an immigrant from Mexico, came to Los Angeles, was a... Somebody who loved his plants and had a small co-op that he was a member of in the Middle Council District 13. And he totally abhorred organized politics, and he said, "I don't think I want to run a campaign, but I'll listen." And I convinced him to go from organizing and registering folks to come over to politics and to actually fight for electing someone now. And he believed enough in me to throw his life aside and not get paid very much, and to do that for about six months, seven months. And he did a great job. I'm here because of him.